Go ahead and call our meeting to order. If you could, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight, sharing your evening with us. And Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that all three trustees are present. And first time in the agenda is correspondence. Is there any correspondence tonight?
No, sir, I have none. Thank you.
All right, great. Moving along so we can get his evening rolling. We have the President of TQL, Mr. Kerry Byrne. Sir, come on up. Appreciate you doing this. Thanks for coming tonight and giving us an update on the big project you guys are doing. So appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. Thank you, everyone, for having me. I'll be brief. I know you have a lot on the agenda, so I wanted to give a quick update on our project. Kind of the third phase of the expansion of our headquarters across the street over there. So as everyone can see, construction is obviously ongoing. It's currently on schedule. We're targeting a completion date for the interior of March of 2024 and the exterior of May of 2024. So the addition is 160,000 square feet, which will bring the total of the three buildings just shy of 400,000 square feet, 392,000 square feet, I'm told, when it's all said and done next spring. This will be our final expansion of the property. We're kind of maxed out, especially as it relates to parking. We currently, in the two buildings, can hold a max capacity of 2,000 TQLers, as we call them. With the addition, we will have room for up to 3,500 employees in the space. And we expect to fill that over time, which is exciting. You know, some of this, a little too much detail, maybe. Mostly operational space for open cubicles, private offices, conferencing and collaboration space. I mentioned to some folks before, we're still figuring out kind of on that 275 side along the three buildings. We think what we're going to do is make that nice patio space for our employees to have events. And, you know, we do Boys and Girls Club and Big Brothers, Big Sisters thing, so we're thinking about that type of thing as well. Where to put the new basketball court, perhaps some pickleball courts. So those decisions are still yet to be made, but it will be all good. We are conscious about curb appeal. I know it's been a mess. As you can probably see, on the south end parking lot, we're starting to clean that up around the pond. We're starting to landscape around that space. We will continue to do that. That's something I pay very close attention to. Happy to report, as I was coming over here, the north new parking lot, there's about 25 folks out there right now working on the landscaping, taking advantage of the fall planting season. So that will look much better, I promise you. We've extended the walking trail around the campus, making it 1.25 miles long. Could be a great spot for Union Township Trustee Foot Race if anyone were interested. And then obviously, we'll eventually tie into the children's hospital. We've already talked to them about that. And so that, I don't know how long it will be, but it will be nice, big, long walking and running trail when it's all said and done. It's essentially it. I would like to say thanks. We certainly appreciate the support and the partnership. Ms. Ayers, thank you. We had a conversation about the crosswalk. As not everybody knows, that we lease space across the street there with an option to purchase. So we have a lot of folks there, and to make it more safe, you know, we need a, you know, a crosswalk. It's been used quite heavily. I'm curious to see in January, February, if folks, you know, jump in their cars and come across. But we really are excited about the opportunity to finish out this headquarters. We're very proud of it. When our teams come in from around the country, as you may or may not know, we have 55 offices across the country, you know, 9,500 total employees, they get really excited, you know, and they can see it in pictures, but when they're there, it's a big, big deal. So we're very excited and we're very grateful.
Mr. Byrne, appreciate you very much. And well, first off, sponsoring the stadium, it's a good year to be sponsoring a stadium.
Yes.
Just won the big trophy, the big, yeah, so well done. Yeah, the shield, yeah, yeah, so that's great. Appreciate the philanthropy work. Also, you folks took care of our dog park, is that correct?
They are, part of their economic development agreement, they'll be working on the dog park at Veterans Park.
Appreciate that very much.
Have been wonderful in the community, also serving on the Claremont County Transportation Improvement District and having some conversations about Eastgate Mall development. Been wonderful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Becker, Jimmick, for him, sir.
Not really. Hey, I just want to say thanks for coming in and giving us the update. And, you know, the whole community really appreciates TQL. I mean, it's certainly a gem for us here and, you know, especially expanding. And, you know, we wish you the best and want to continue to work with you as a partner in the community here that you can be successful.
Mr. Luke, sir.
Yeah, no, hey, just thanks for coming out. Thanks for the time and always being a great partner here in Union Township and looking back to, looking back to the community here. But like you said, from here out to your 55 offices and 9,500 employees, it's pretty special also that, you know, it's based right here in Union Township and we get to be, we get to be a partner together. So, yeah, thank you.
You just had some big festival going on, right? The Ferris wheel out there and all that?
Yeah, so we had our TQL Fall Fest for our employees and their families. So we had roughly 2,000 people on the campus last Saturday with all the fixings that you might see at corner, including funnel cake.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that you caused an argument at my house. My son, Gunner, wanted to go when he saw the Ferris wheel. I'm like, buddy, yeah, I'm sorry, man, I can't.
I'd have cleared that.
Oh, yeah? Appreciate that. Mr. Byrne, bless you, my friend. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, and folks, I do apologize. Normally, I always announce this and I forgot. If you have any public comments that you'd like to make tonight, not for the zoning cases, we'll leave that strictly for the zoning cases. But any public comments tonight you'd like to address with the board, we've got comment cards right back there. And if I see anyone else go, and then Mr. McCormick, would you mind checking that out real quick? Have you seen any? Okay, yeah, please, yeah, then, anyway, fill out those comment cards and then we'll bring those up and then we'll move right on to public comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. And I do see a couple, I always like to try my best to recognize, I see a couple of school board members here. Thank you both for being here very much. Appreciate you. So moving on to our personnel actions, we'll start with Mr. Mason Blankenship. Sir, come on up. Mason, how are you?
Good, sir. How you doing?
Good, good, good. And before we move forward, I'll have Mr. Matt Taylor go ahead and introduce you.
Thank you, Mr. Dills.
Please.
Tonight, I am presenting to the Board of Trustees Mason Blankenship for consideration of employment with the Union Township Service Department. Mr. Blankenship is a graduate of Amelia High School. Following graduation, Mr. Blankenship enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. Mr. Blankenship has a background in public works, having spent the last year and a half at the Hamilton County Highway Department as a highway maintenance worker. Mr. Blankenship also has a Class A CDL as well. Mr. Blankenship has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the Maintenance Worker One position. I would like to request that the Board appoint Mason Blankenship to the position of Maintenance Worker One in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement at the year one rate. Mr. Blankenship's starting date would be October 25th, 2023.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, great. I do have a question for you, Mr. Blankenship. I'm just curious, so you did work in Hamilton County, or you still do, and then you're moving over here. Appreciate that. I know you're a hometown guy. What's the reasoning? Just curious.
I see more, like, improvement here, that I could better advance here than I can at the county, I felt. And I'm just really excited to be more closer to hometown and ready to represent Union Township.
Love that. Love that. Well, their losses are gained. And I see you got your family there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, introduce.
That's my wife, Lauren, and my baby boy, and Dalton, and girl, Brooke.
Love it. Love it. Cuties. Awesome, awesome. A Marine, CDL license, Hamilton County experience. Awesome. Appreciate you very much. Gentlemen, did you have anything?
No, I just say it sounds great. Appreciate your interest in coming to Union Township.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you for your service. Semper Fi.
Thank you, sir. Semper Fi.
Okay, gentlemen, I want to attend a motion to approve an appointment of Mason Blankenship to the position of Maintenance Worker One in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement effective October 25th, 2023, at the year one maintenance worker rate, worker rate of pay.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker? Yes. Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mason, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, absolutely. Welcome. Congratulations, Mr. Byrne.
Congratulations. I'm excited to have you.
Congratulations.
And Mason, if you want, stick around for one second afterwards and then we'll grab a picture with you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, perfect. Yep, no sweat. All right, next on the item on the agenda is Ms. Lisa Ayer. Ms. Lisa, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good. Am I saying your last name correctly?
No.
No, tell me.
It's R.
R.
Like the letter R.
Clearly, R. Got it. Yes, okay. And, well, perfect. And before I begin, Ms. Ayers, would you like to introduce her?
Thank you, sir. I am asking the Board to consider approving Ms. R. for a position of Community Engagement Manager. Township has had a great history with communication professionals on a part-time job, working with great social media, media releases and a newsletter. However, we want, now want to take this position and make it an emphasis to get more information out and interactivity in new and different ways. The Community Engagement Manager position will be working on our external communications through traditional and social media. Manager will be working on expanded vision for communications to give residents more perspective on what's going on around the township, including information on the amazing tasks our staff are completing every day, also a spotlight on our great events and businesses around the township. Manager is also going to work with us to help improve internal communications. With 170 staff members spread throughout so many different facilities, it can be hard to make sure that everyone has the right information and to help foster that team environment. This position will help work on those internal messages as well as our external communication. I'm looking forward to bringing a new perspective in so that we can unify our message to the community and work to improve our social, special events and branding. We received 85 applications for this position. We heard from some incredibly talented communications professionals. Staff interviewed nine people, had a round of second interviews for two people, and I am excited to have Lisa here this evening for your consideration. Ms. Ayer, or R. has a Bachelor Degree of Arts from Morehead State University, but she has been the Public Information Officer for the City of Mason since 2014. In this current role, she has direct experience dealing with many of the issues that we face here and has excelled at handling those issues. This includes media communications, reporting, social media, magazine and newsletter work, logo and branding, special events and more. The staff that did interviews were impressed with her attitude and knowledge of the necessary issues for communicating with this large of an audience. She is also a local resident, and we were impressed with her excitement that she brings for telling the story of this community and her vested interest in making sure our events and message get out to this community. Ask you to consider her appointment this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. So Ms. Ayers, Ms. R., okay, got it, okay. I know someone with the same, same last name, but they pronounce it Ayer. That's one of the reasons why I thought that. But, but fair enough, R. is. So, so Morehead State, excellent. Obviously, a lot of applicants, and you stood out. And, and from Mason, since 2014, right? It's almost a decade there. Okay, great, great. Appreciate you coming on board very much. Did, is your family here with you tonight or no?
They're not. They're currently eating dinner. I've got little one.
Okay, okay, yeah, no sweat. I get it. I get it. I wish I was eating dinner, too. The, Mr. Becker, do you have anything for Ms. Ayer, Ms. R.?
Ms. R., no, when I looked over your resume, I was very impressed. In fact, to the point where I thought you were overqualified for what I thought we needed here. And Ms. Ayers and I talked about it during lunch, and she convinced me you're exactly what we need, we need here.
Thank you.
Taking our word on that and looking forward to you, you doing great things for Union Township and making the taxpayers proud.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Luke, sir?
Yeah, I'm emphatically excited to have you come on board. You definitely bring the background and experience. It is wonderful to have, but you're a local resident, which is unique. And at the same rate, you know, this is a big step forward for Union Township to have an engagement officer to fulfill these roles that you will be handling and moving forward. So you have a lot of an environment here where nothing's pre-built. You're rebuilding it out for the first time, which is, I think, exciting. You have your fingerprints all over it. But it's very exciting from an aspect of, you know, the internal message, the external message, and ultimately, it's the communication with the residents. It's the fact that they are being heard and that we are communicating back and reaching several different demographics. And that's just wonderfully exciting, and you bring absolutely a unique perspective to the table with that, too. Again, from the pool of applicants, but, you know, just, just your, your unique perspective as well. If you mind me asking, how, what are the little ones?
Three and five and a half.
Oh, I got a five, three and one here, so it's just, yeah, 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 absolutely. So, you know, that's a great ages, so much fun. So, anyway, that's exciting. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I attend a motion to approve appointment of Lisa R. to the position of Community Engagement Manager in the Administration Department at a rate of 38.46 an hour effective October 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker? Yes. Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. R. Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, we will move ahead to our department reports. And we will start off first with our fire and EMS with Mr. Mark Fife, our Acting Chief. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Dills. In September, the department responded to 134 fire and service calls and 508 emergency medical calls that resulted in 477 patient contacts and 359 hospital transports. Personnel completed 1,090 hours of training and conducted five life safety inspections and nine inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. Also, I'd like to just point out that on September 19th, our honor guard had the privilege alongside the Claremont County Sheriff's Office Honor Guard to present colors at the Great American Ballpark before the Reds game. This proud moment saw Lieutenant Craig Forster, Lieutenant Adam Dressler, firefighter John Milligan and firefighter Jessica Mooney representing the Fire Department with the utmost professionalism and honor, showcasing their commitment to the community and our nation. You know, the honor guard is something that they put a lot of time and effort into, a lot of practice. We don't routinely get to display that, so it was exciting for us to get to do that in such a, such a large venue, and they look absolutely fantastic, something to be proud of. That concludes my report.
Well said, Chief. I was at that game. They did a great job. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I know they put a lot of time, energy and work into that, and it's challenging to be on point, you know, so, well done. And moving on to our, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
Nope.
Mr. Luke?
No.
Good, thank you. Sorry, guys. Moving on to our Police Department, Chief Tony Reese, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. In the month of September, the Communications Center handled 4,973 calls for services, fire EMS and 5,411 total calls. They processed 483 juvenile and adult court-related documents for the courts. They processed 111 court notices that were entered for officers' personal appearance for various and upcoming court cases. They handled 10 Rule 16s that were processed for the prosecutor's office, zero vendor permits for the month, and 132 record, public records requests. In the affair, in the area of public affairs and crime prevention, officers conducted 12 public relations events during the month of September, which included two active shooter presentations at local businesses. And I'm happy to say, after COVID hiatus, the Citizen Police Academy is back. We started our 18th Citizen Police Academy this month, and we're looking forward to a good class this year. The Union Township Honor Guard also participated at the Lantern Lining event in September at the Mount Mariah Cemetery. In the area of the Operations Bureau, the Patrol Division took 367 incident reports, took 112 crash reports, made 853 traffic stops, issued 179 written citations, 713 written warnings, and made 99 criminal arrests, 89 traffic arrests, and served 87 warrants. And that concludes my, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It popped in my head while you were talking. 5,411, 5,411 total calls, it's about 180 per day. Gosh, I don't know what I would do if I got 180 calls in one day. How's our dispatch doing? We don't talk too much about them. Just wanted to see how they're doing and...
They do good. Obviously, a busy department. Obviously, we're the only department in the county other than the Comp Center, as are our dispatch center.
Yeah.
So it's nice. It's personal attention to our officers. I know they appreciate it, and our dispatcher is doing incredible jobs, so.
A lot of dispatchers know and appreciate them greatly, very much. Great. Mr. Becker, Jimmick, sir?
Yeah, Chief Reese, come read through the call-out reports. And this one incident in particular jumped out at me, having to do with, it's involving, I think, four juveniles and Matthew Winington. Can you provide any, is there any background on, on this or on him, or any additional information on this, on this report?
Can't comment completely on it because it's still making its way through court. But in a nutshell, it was a very isolated situation, four juveniles doing juvenile things. They ragged in some houses and cars in the area of the Red Roof Inn. Unfortunately, we had a gentleman down there that's a maintenance worker that took matters into his own hands, chasing the kids in a vehicle, fired a few rounds in the air. At the end of the day, between the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and our department, we really go out with all the subjects. Nobody was hurt. The adult male was charged and still making his way through court. The juveniles were charged as well, but luckily, nobody was hurt.
Well, good. I mean, the report says they threw, that these kids threw eggs at his wife? I mean, that sounds like an assault to me and...
Well, not entirely the case there. They threw eggs at the Red Roof Inn. She was, happened to be outside taking some garbage out. One of the eggs almost hit her, which I think is what prompted the male to take the action he took in the situation, but nobody was hurt.
All right, good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Luke?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Chief. Moving on to our Service Department, Service Director, Mr. Matt Taylor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. In the Cemetery Division, from September 1st through the 30th, 13 burials were performed, generating $7,000. Six resident graves were purchased, generating $3,750. One columbarium niche was purchased, generating $1,400. The total amount generated for the period was $15,697.20. In the Roads Division, a total of 32 work orders were completed on 22 township roads, and 121 potholes were repaired on 17 streets. In the Parks Division, staff continues the daily seasonal maintenance at the township parks and facilities. And staff set up and worked the movie on September 9th at the Civic Center gym. And staff performed the fall maintenance on the landscape area at the Civic Center, which included removal of the plants and installation of the mounds. And that concludes my report. Other than, I do appreciate the Board coming to the Lantern Lining Cemetery and the Police Honor for presenting the colors. So I appreciate that. You know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. It was a great show. They did a great job. Absolutely. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. Luke?
Yeah, just, Mr. Taylor, I was out driving through and walking through Klepper Park and then also the neighborhood right there. A lot of the neighbors are very excited about the improvements that they're seeing. And I know that's all progressing with the playground and pickleball court, so great work with that. I don't know if you've got anything you want to add, but I just wanted to call it out. It's all very exciting to see it take shape and form and then also to see people out busy and active using the dog park. So just, and see people walking their dogs, too. So it's just nice to see all these new initiatives that we've executed on together, gentlemen, in the last, you know, year and a half, so.
Yeah, the, I can update you on pretty much all three of those items. In the dog park, we actually ordered some, Ms. Ayers and I picked some obstacles out for the animals to, I guess, run, jump, play on them. So those are in, so we're working on getting those put together and put out there. So it is very active at the park with those. There is a water line there also for people to, you know, obviously get water for their animals or if they get dirty or clean them off as well. The pickleball court is hopefully, the fence posts are almost all in now. They're hopeful, hopefully going to start color coding it the first part of next week or the end of this week. So we should, we're optimistic still at the end of the month, of this month, to be up and operational. The, I just had a Zoom meeting this morning with regards to the playground set. It is tentatively scheduled to be shipped on, at the end of the month. Unfortunately, we've had some supply issues, manufacturer delays, so, but that's the latest and greatest.
That's great. It's going to very much activate that, that park. And like I said, we're just north of Summerside Elementary there and that whole community. And that's, it's a good way to energize and help with the whole anxiety and mental health type of concerns and issues that get people outside and active and community together. So, great work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor, thanks. Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Next up is Plan and Zoning Development Director, Mr. Martin McCormick, sir.
For the month of September...
For the month of September, we had 53 zoning inspections related to violations, eight complaints, three of which were unfounded, four warning citations issued, three 15-day non-compliance letters, no issues forwarded to the attorney, no 30-day violation letters, six cases resolved, 348 illegal signs removed, which is the fewest we've had since March, 17 miscellaneous issues, seven violations for the month, nine re-inspections and violations, and one nuisance filed. As far as permit activity for the month, we have one commercial permit, four changes of use, five signs, two temporary sales permits, 34 single-family homes, which was the most we've had all year, three permits for additions, one for a deck, seven for accessory structures, 11 for pools, fences, for 68 total permits of the month, and a revenue of $17,410 for the month, and $100 additional for the Fire Department revenue. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. McCormick, good job. Next up will be our Administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
Thank you, sir. Open checkbooks up to date through the end of September. We've had continued movement on the Glen Estee campus development. We were lucky enough to get to celebrate with Elmington, the first buildings are out of the ground, and they're working on the site development there. We also celebrated the Union Apartment Complex opening last week. Also, had a lot of work this week on the East Gate Mall development. There was about 40 people that showed up for our first community visioning session last night at Crossroads Church. I've heard some really good feedback from around. I know there was more people that stopped in today for the work sessions that the developer was having there. There will be more sessions for the rest of the week, please check our website, but there will be times tomorrow and then Thursday evening here in the Civic Center for additional meetings, and we welcome everyone's opinion and comments coming out. Roadwork continues to be developing. Happy to report Old 74 in the area of Elik opened up to traffic on October 1st, so that should continue to ease traffic concerns in that area. Closures remain on Old 74 between Glen Estee, Withemville, and East Gate Boulevard. Anticipate opening in December at the late end, hopefully they will have that done sooner. We continue to work with the Engineers' Office to monitor those traffic changes in hopes to address as many concerns as possible. We talked a little bit about Clepper Park already. The Mount Carmel Park donation that we discussed at a previous meeting has closed, so that is now in township control for the extra acre of land. Thank you to Mr. McCormick for helping us work through that process. Talked to Mr. Taylor, and we'll start some planning for next year about how we want to improve that area, and we'll get to work on that. Township planner job and the fire chief jobs are up and live, encourage as many people as possible to apply to those. We look forward to moving those positions forward to the board for their consideration in the next months. Finally, the rededication and renaming of Fire Headquarters will be on October 17th in honor of retired Chief Dymling. Ask anyone who'd like to come, to appear on the 17th at 3:00 PM. We are looking forward to that renaming at the Fire Headquarters. And that is all I have at the moment.
Ms. Ayers, good job, good report, and glad to hear that there was a good turnout last night. I coached my daughter's soccer team, and we had a game last night, so I couldn't make it last night. I do plan on being there Thursday.
Good.
But, all good, I appreciate you very much. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
Do not.
Mr. Luke?
Just thank you, Ms. Ayers, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, great, perfect. Good job, Ms. Ayers. Okay, moving on to our public hearings case, which may be why some of you are here, and let's move on to the first one before we do. So, it's Union Township Zoning Case 5-23-Z, Zone Zulu. Mr. McCormick, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. The first case number that Mr. Chairman just referenced here is with respect to the First Baptist Church of Glen Estee, with the site location being the multiple addresses that are here on Old 74, and the parcels also being, as seen here on this opening slide and on the location portion of page one of staff report. The property involved for the five parcels is 3.327 acres, and the zoning is R2 and B1 for the affected properties. The case involves a zone map amendment for those properties to be zoned PD, Land Development. So, the location of the property is located on the northeast side of the Old State Route 74 intersection with Teal Town Road. As you can see in this particular slide, the highlighted parcels are the affected parcels, and the existing main church complex is just to the east. In this area, Old State Route 74 is a minor two arterial two-lane roadway with a left turn lane in the center with a traffic volume of approximately 17,017 average daily trips in this area of the township. Teal Town is a major collector, two-lane roadway with a traffic volume of approximately 8,170 trips a day in the proposed project area. Those numbers may be a little bit off right now because of the work that's being done around 32, but those are the counts that we have. This particular slide just shows the roads as they're being maintained, two roads are maintained by the county, and the blue-lined areas are the township roads. As referenced in the lower part of page one of the staff report, the property is owned both residential, R2, and business, with the adjacent properties to the north being primarily R2. To the northeast, we have the PD for the church. To the south, it's predominantly R2, other than that southeast corner, there's a small PD there, and to the southwest, there's a PD there, and to the immediate west is business-owned property along Old 74. Here is a picture, a view of the site with the topography zoomed in. It's a pretty level site. The site is in the Old 74, Summerside Willowville Corridor, in that area, the plan, Conference of Plan acknowledges that this area of the township is suitable for limited commercial expansion, redevelopment, provided that smaller fragmented parcels are consolidated under a cohesive development plan with limited coordinated access, et cetera. Additionally, the plan indicates that the northern portion of the corridor is most appropriate for neighborhood-oriented uses, similar in nature to what is proposed in the applicant's request, which I'll come to in a moment. For purposes of commercial development, redevelopment, the use of traditional building materials, and the deployment of adequate vegetative buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines, an addition of landscaping enhancements along the corridor is required, with efforts being made to implement noise and/or light pollution reduction strategies wherever practicable also for the plan. So, this is the overlay, proposed improvements. This plan differs a little bit than what was presented to the zoning commission because the zoning commission had forwarded recommendations regarding the plan, and the last recommendation that was forwarded involved moving the proposed improvements to the east a bit further away from Teal Town, which is what the applicant has done since the last meeting. And so, the applicant's proposing, as you'll see here in the staff report, two flag football fields, a restroom, a pickleball court area, and a playground area, and a walking track that goes around the perimeter of that space. So, you can see what the site looks like now and developed, there's a sidewalk along Old 74, and you can see what's proposed. In terms of the perimeter of the site, you can get an idea of what's, what's there a little better with this 3D view of the, of the aerial of the property. The relevant ordinances to consider from the zoning resolution are from Article 6, Sections 680 to 687, particularly 680, 681, 682, 684, which I will not read, but are on this particular slide here, the most relevant portions of those sections. Here is the applicant's plan, zoomed in a little bit. This is the updated plan. Pickleball area is here to the southeast, and the proposed restroom is here, with the playground being closer to the existing parking area. If there is going to be detention necessary, the applicant has shown a potential detention basin if needed in that location there to the north, and the walking track is what surrounds the site with the sidewalk being essentially on the outside edge of that heavy black line where the property line and edge of right-of-way tend to be. So, I'll pause here for a second. The town, the township re-zoned for the parcels to the east of the project in 2004, which ultimately established the governing site development plan for the First Baptist Church of Glen Estee. Minor amendments were approved in 2006 for wall signage and 2010 to reduce and/or eliminate landscaping. In 2012, major amendment was approved for new sanctuary and the adaptive reuse of some of the existing structures, and since September of 2017, the church has acquired four of the five other parcels that are involved with this request. And so, now the applicant's plan is to expand upon and complement the church's existing use with this plan here. Review of the staff, staff's review of the proposal indicates that the plan appears to meet the objectives of the 2030 Horizon Conference of Plan with respect to the Old 74 Summerside Willowville Corridor. Then would result in the consolidation of the fragmented and underutilized parcels, so there'd be one parcel instead of five, and would also include the existing church property to the east. There's one proposed structure which would consist of brick, high-quality traditional building material, although vegetative buffering is not part of the plan, there is a large amount of green space, and the plan is consistent with what was allowed for the church PD that is to the east in 2010. The recent stormwater, there have been recent stormwater improvements made, with potentially more being considered, and compliance to be addressed through the county's review process. The applicant would meet or exceed all the minimum setback requirements, and the uses are consistent with the PD to the east. The zoning commission's recommendation that September 27th, their meeting was unanimous to rezone the property from single-family detached residential R2 and business B1 to planned development, and they had added an additional item for consideration, which I'll come to in a moment. Here are the slides of the site. This is looking from the axis on 74 to the southeast. This is looking northwest from the axis to the northwest towards Teal Town, site would be under right. This is looking southwest to northwest, from left to right, side is directly ahead. This is looking northwest from Old 74, site would be straight ahead to the right, and this is looking straight at the site from the sidewalk a little further more to the west. This is looking across the street to the southwest, and this is looking across from the site at the intersection, south to southwest, and this is if you rotate essentially to the right, the last picture to southwest at Teal Town, and west, if you keep rotating to the right, you'll see what's there, the gas station and the house. This is looking north across the site to the home that the church surrounds on Teal Town there, and this is approximately standing in the area where the flag football area would be. This is looking northeast, east, back towards the church across the site, and this is looking northwest from the existing parking area towards the potential detention area if it's needed. In terms of the recommended modifications on the last sheet, the applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies. Science plan would be needed if, would ultimately need to be submitted if needed, but at this point, there's no science proposed. Same with lighting, there's none proposed at this time. That change, we would need information on lighting. Mentioned earlier, new survey is underway, so that is being addressed and will be submitted. There are some administrative items that will need to be addressed prior to site plan approval, but that would be addressed during the commercial zoning permit process. The applicant had to move, from the zoning commission had to move the slide everything over 20 feet away from Teal Town Road, which they have done in the revised plan. They've also opted to put in a little bit higher fence around the perimeter of the proposed pickleball court, so that item was addressed, it was in the original staff report. And item six of the original staff report was addressed essentially when the applicant chose to move the proposed improvements further to the east on the property. So, really, any additional vegetative buffering at this point would just be up to the applicant's, it's not really required. In terms of action required for the trustees, we're looking at sections, as I mentioned earlier, 680 and 687, and the board's role is to either enter motion to recommend approval, approval with modifications, or denial of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property as submitted and as deemed appropriate. Are there any questions that you have for me?
All right, good job. Can you go back to the original slide, the overlay?
The overlay?
Yeah, yeah, that one's, with all the, with everything that's...
There.
There you go, perfect, perfect. So, in layman's terms, I've got a trail that goes around the entire perimeter, I've got two football-slash-soccer fields, I've got one big two-quartered pickleball court, I've got a restroom, and I've got basically maybe a retention pond.
Yes.
Got it, Roger that, perfect. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
My only concern, I guess, is the proximity to, I guess, Old 74. You know, ball rolling into the road, perhaps a safety concern with that, and of course, the worst-case scenario is a ball thrown out of the road and then a kid following it. Is there going to be enough of a buffer, some kind of fence or shrub ridge to prevent that?
That's, that's essentially what the zoning commission talked about, so the distance from the property line, not from the edge of curb, is 40 feet or more now, plus the end zone area, which is going to be another 10, 15 yards from that, the end zone to that outside line, so you're probably looking at, I'm going to guess, 65, 70 feet in terms of what would be in the air to the property line, and that's, there's going to be some additional space between there and the actual road.
So, to put it simply, how far are we looking from the end zone to Teal Town Road? And then, and then also the sidelines to Old 74?
If you're going from the beginning of the end zone, because people aren't going to be throwing the ball in the end zone unless you're spiking it down or something, you're probably looking at about 70, 75 feet or more.
Okay, fair enough, okay. What, what about from, to Old 74 to the sidelines?
That's going to be probably in the neighborhood of about 40 to 50 feet.
Okay, I'll save mine for discussion.
If, so if, so if we approve this as-is, and in the future, this winds up being an issue with, you know, balls or frisbees or whatever winding up in the road, can we then, at some point in the future, force them to put up some type of barrier to prevent that?
Question.
I think, well, I mean, if that would be the case, they would want to put a buffer in there of some sort.
Or they don't want to.
Yeah, 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 that's a good question.
May I?
Please, please, Ms. Ayers.
If you are concerned about that now, I would suggest you put it in as a condition. It is significantly easier to address on the front end than it is going to be a year from now.
Well, we'll go over that more in discussion.
That's all I have to.
Mr. Luke, do you have anything for Mr. McCormick?
No, I still have the same concern. We'll look at that as a conditional topic.
All right, perfect, perfect. So, I'm going to go and open this case up. It's a public hearing. By the way, I apologize, my voice is hoarse, I'm, again, I coached my daughter's soccer team, it was a close game last night. So, I'm going to open this case up, it is public hearing, so we'll start off with proponents. Anyone that is for this case, come on up, I'd like to hear from you. I'm going to go and swear you in. Okay, last call. Seeing none, go ahead and open up to anyone that is an opponent, that is against this zoning case, against, for this development on the church. Seeing none, okay, last call for either sides. Is there anyone for the church here? Would, would you, I can't force you, but would you be okay answering some questions? Okay, appreciate that. Great, and then I got to swear you in, since it is a public zoning case. Sir, do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth, so hope you got it?
Yes.
Great, great, then please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jeffrey Moss, I'm the administrative pastor of First Baptist Church of Glen Estee. Residential address is 693 Mockingbird Lane in Summerside.
Great, great, thank you, thank you. So, first, well, first, did you have anything you'd like to say?
I will speak to the concern about balls escaping. This will be, this is only a 70-yard field, it's for children up to sixth grade, it's for Pee-wee flag football. There will be no field goals, no kickoffs, no things like that scheduled, so we have considered those things that you've spoken of, and we feel like, in context of the type of fields and the type of balls that would be used, I think it's not a concern, but I understand your concern nonetheless. The fields will be made of the, of a, the synthetic fields, they're going to be the very nice, like Paycor Stadium synthetic fields, they're going to be a very attractive property, so we're excited about how it's going to appear for the community.
Thank you, and you said laws, is that correct?
Excuse me?
Your, your last name, sorry.
Moss, M-O-S-S.
Oh, I'm sorry, Moss, okay. Well, Mr. Moss, first off, Glen Estee Baptist Church is an amazing partner, you guys are great, and, and so, I, I love this idea, love it very much, and... And from my understanding, you sought donations for quite some time from your church family. And so congratulations to accomplish that goal. I love it. So I do have a couple of questions on my end. First off, if you're not putting a barrier up around the property, you could probably anticipate non-organized games being played there, meaning it's going to be kind of treated like a public park. Have you thought about that?
We have. And as a church, that's going to be a fine line that we're going to have to deal with. We welcome the community for the walking track and those things.
Sure.
And I'm going to say, short of abuse, and we are not going, we probably, because of liability issues, we're not going to open it up for just any community use. We can't. Our insurance company wouldn't allow it. But we know the reality is, if some local kids want to come over there and play some football, we're probably not going to be able to stop them.
Okay, okay, fair enough. So in the future, so there's nothing mentioned about lighting at all? So for example, if you wanted to play ball right now, it's looking relatively, it's getting down to dark time. Do you plan on putting lighting up in the future? No, so strictly daytime, spring, summer?
It's a kids' league, Saturday mornings.
Got it, okay.
Probably afternoon practices in the fall, but no, no night games. This is strictly a little kids' league.
Fair enough, fair enough. I'm going to let, I'm going to open it up to both of you. Just my, my common sense thought, well, actually, I'll leave that for when we have discussion. So, Mr. Becker, did you have any, any questions for Mr. Moss?
No, I, I just, I guess, continue with my prior concern. And I'm thinking too, back, you know, when I was in junior high, high school, and we'd pick up games at the local park, and, you know, boys will be boys. Now that, I, I guess I would feel more comfortable with this if we had some language that would give us some authority to enforce some type of border, if this becomes a problem in the future, to, to, you know, require some type of barrier adequate to prevent a ball, frisbee, debris, whatever, sporting equipment winding up in the road. I'm not sure how to word that, but, you know, I, I don't know that I want to require they put up a twenty-foot fence.
Yeah, I get it.
But I would like us to have some options to force something sometime in the future if it becomes necessary.
My, my biggest concern is in Teal Town, it's Old Seventy-Four. My biggest concern also is, it's Tuesday afternoon, summertime, hey, let's go play ball on the field at the church, right? No one's really there to enforce the rules or make sure safety's there, because it's not a Saturday organized football, soccer game. That'd be my concern as well. But yeah, Ms. Philo, did you have anything for?
I agree with the concerns, which you guys got. I think we'll get to that in board comments. One, but I do recognize as a blessing on the community, so I think that's phenomenal. I, kind of on that same vein, I want to ask a little history on the project. Like, you sound like you're very specifically, uniquely targeting Pee-wee youth sports. I just want to hear your perspective as far as, is that an unmet market or unaddressed market? I'm going to follow the psychology logic there to get kids active and out in some type of sport, but I want to hear the church's perspective to pursue this project for the community and for their community.
We have for several years now, I think maybe close to twenty years, we've run the Upward Youth Basketball Program at our gym on Saturdays. And we've had thousands, literally thousands of kids in the community over the years that play youth basketball in our gym. And when we got this property, and it was really a miracle the way we got this property, we don't get into that, when we received this property a couple of years ago, we immediately thought that this would be a great opportunity to have something like this that we can use as ministry to use, the program's called Upward, it's a Christian sports organization, and to have the Upward Football, Flag Football Program here. And that was, that was our immediate thought when we received this property about three years ago. And we've been moving toward that since. It's a, it's a ministry, it's an outreach to reach families, to reach children in the community through sports, is really what it is. And it's, it's core to our mission. It's what we want to do, to touch the community, and we know that sports are a great touch point with young families. So that's what it is.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for that background. So as planning, you know, move forward, I think it's a beautiful project and the layout and design and everything, the concerns we're addressing right now, did you guys internally talk about that as far as a barrier or fence? Proponent, opponent of it, or is it a budgetary restraint? Or, you know, what is it?
We're not excited about churches having fences. We, we understand philosophically that that is, it just seems a little odd to have a fence around the church. Urban, yes, union township, no. So we, we've not liked the idea. And also, I, as a resident perspective, I just wonder how it looks right there along Old Seventy-Four to have a chain link fence running along the road. I think that would be a little odd-looking, frankly, just a section of chain link fence running along the road. But I understand your rationale. And let me say also, Mr. Becker, I believe, referred to soccer. We do not officially intend to have soccer. There will not be soccer goals. And I understand the soccer ball can roll infinitely, but a football won't. So we have thought it through on, on the safe distance for ball travel and kids.
Okay.
As much as we can know about the unknowns with kids.
Could I ask one question?
Please.
Is there a landscaping plan for along there? Could you consider additional bushes and trees that might be a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and go with your goal, but still would be something to help block errant balls?
I'm thinking down that same path too, but I'm thinking if they're acceptable to what, what we may discuss.
Trees and shrubbery.
Basically be.
Accomplish the same goal and be a little bit easier to deal with.
And my, my only concern is Old Seventy-Four. I'm okay with Teal Town. It's just Old Seventy-Four. And my only concern is, isn't Saturdays. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Sunday, when, when you folks aren't there. And I know it's not intended to be a soccer field, but, and that's my only concern. And I'm okay with, you know, flexing a little bit on not having a fence up. I like, I didn't even think about what you said. Good thinking about how not having a fence around a church, I get it. What are your thoughts on shrubbery bushes of some sort? Because even if a ball flies out in the middle of the road, still a bush kind of prevents a kid from jumping over a bush to get the ball, you know? So what are your thoughts?
If we did, I can arborvitae shrub along the road. It's pricey. You're looking at ninety yards, two hundred and seventy feet, two hundred and seventy lineal feet of arborvitae would be pretty expensive, for one thing. I'll say that.
Get that. Well, I was only talking about, unless you, unless you guys think otherwise, I was only talking about Old Seventy-Four. I'm good with Teal Town, and I'm good with the other sidelines as well, on Teal Town as well. I was just talking about Old Seventy-Four, which would be seventy yards, correct?
Well, ninety counting the end zones, two hundred and seventy feet.
Good call.
Yeah, no, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking of rap either. I'm thinking justice there, justice there.
Is, I mean, is that a deal breaker for you? Would it kill this project?
I can't say, I can't answer because I don't know what that cost would be.
Yeah.
I know they're not inexpensive.
Chairman.
Please.
I guess what I'm thinking here is, I really don't want to, you know, force them to incur any additional cost, especially since we really don't know if they need to. What I would really feel more comfortable with is just having some language, maybe it says, you know, contingent upon a public safety issue not developing. Maybe something that's simple in, in the language, that if this does occur in the future, that there's a public safety issue, that we can act based on what we approved tonight.
Seems fair. Seems fair. Would that be fine for you?
I think that's, I agree with you. I agree with your word that it's fair.
Okay.
To assess it as it develops.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, great, great. Did either one of you have anything for Mr. Moss?
Mr. McCormick, I desperately asking.
There, there may be some room to move it a little bit more to the north as well. I don't know that they would want to move it a lot to the north, because you're backing into the neighboring residential lot, but.
How, how far are we talking?
I don't, I can't really tell what that number is.
If it's, if it's five, ten feet, that, that's not really much, much for me.
Yeah.
So regardless, I was still going to have the same concern.
It won't take care of the concern entirely, but it might.
Help me.
Make it a little bit safer.
Okay. Okay. Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'll see if we hear more from community. I'll recommend that we, I'm good here anyway, is what I'm saying.
Anything for Mr. Moss?
No.
All good. Thank you for coming tonight and being able to speak. I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case, proponent or opponent? Please, come on up, sir.
He had some good discussion. We get more people coming out. Remember, no one raised their hand at first.
I wasn't good enough.
See? There we go.
You're okay. Let me go and swear you in real quick.
Yes, sir.
Sir, do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Great. Please state your name and address for the record.
William Thompson, and I live at forty-three eighty Eastgate Boulevard. First of all, I'm not a member of the church. I just happen to be here, I'm, you know, interested in what's going on in town. And I think it's great that this church is interested in putting something up for the community, for their, for their community at least. But I was listening to the gentleman speak, and he said something like, I'm paraphrasing, "Well, you know, if kids want to play there, there's nothing we can do about it." Yes, there is. You can put a fence up. And yes, the chain link fence isn't pretty, but if a child plays there when he shouldn't be there, his friends are hanging out, like you say, a pickup game or something like that, and breaks his leg, and his parents sue you, you're going to wish you had that ugly fence. Now, I don't know what space there is in between the track on the Seventy-Four side and the field, how much space there is, but what about a fence just around the field? Well, you know, you close off the field, that way, you know, if they climb the fence, it's kind of their fault. I'd say it that way, but, you know, there's a fence, there's a barrier, there's signs of saying no trespassing. Is there enough room for a fence in between the field and the running track? You don't have to put the whole property in a fence. You know, some sort of fence, some sort of something, A, most kids will go, oh, you know, we can't go there because of the fence. And if they climb a fence, well, then they're in trouble. And I don't know much about fencing these days, but there's got to be something reasonably attractive you can put in. And it's not along the entire street, you know, the entire fence line. It's either that or a complete row of sticky bushes, prickly bushes, that kids don't want to go through, you know? Because, you know, a few shrubs is great, looks beautiful, but kids are going to go through them if they really want to. Like I said, if they, like you said, if they want to play there, they're going to play there. So I'm just concerned, like you say, you know, that there is something you can do. It may not be the prettiest thing, but down the road, since we keep talking about, you know, put a clause in for down the road, and down the road, when somebody gets hurt, it's going to be too late. I don't want them in the church to have to go through, you know, a lawsuit or anything like that, because some kid wanted to just play on their field. You know, that's all I want to say.
Appreciate that. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go and close public discussion. And gentlemen, open up for the board. Mr. Becker, what are your thoughts?
Gentlemen had a number of good points. I'm still hesitant to want to require a fence. And no, I mean, there is attractive fencing. I'm thinking you had black wrought iron fences, you know, if you think like the White House, for example, that type of fence. But it still gets to be a lot of expense. I, I guess I still like the idea of approving this with a contingency that, that showed a public safety issue develop in the future, that this can be revisited by the board.
Ms. Philo, your thoughts?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. So I hear exactly what Mr. Thompson is saying and what Mr. Moss is saying. As a church, philosophically approach they want to take, they're not going to lock people out from, it's a community outreach program fundamentally, to want people to engage with First Baptist Glen Estie. So I get that. But that's also, we live in the land of insurance, and if you don't have the no trespassing sign, and some parent or family member wants to sue you, they by all means will, you know, sue you, I guess. I'll let, that, that's something that's not within the powers of our board and something that we can really make a decision on and act. I just know as a trustee member, I don't want to, you know, limit the involvement where a child or someone may get hurt. I think that's fundamentally what's on your minds. It's the same type of concept that we've had before for, you know, other discussions that, that way on that kid rolls out on the street, runs out on the street, you name it, car strikes him, we hear about it, and we know we had the power to say, hey, there should be a fence there, some type of barrier. So I think in that frank, you know, discussion, I'm comfortable with, with a recommendation for, for them to work with the staff for review of a fence barrier, but I'm thinking just on the south side of the field. I'm thinking kind of baseball dugout style that's open, that you can walk through, you zigzag through, so it's not prohibiting people from, if that's what they want to put forward as a, as a potential option, it's not locking people out. I mean, they can do a nice, beautiful concept that says, you know, just like the end zones, F-B-C-G-E on the fence itself or something like, you know, so it can be presented well. The other thing that comes to mind is this proximity to the road. I don't know anyone around here who's familiar, but on Round Bottom Road into Anderson Township is that Riverside, Riverview Park, the flag football fields that are there. What do they have? They have those big ten-foot, twenty-foot fences, and that's how far off from Round Bottom Road. Right? I mean, that's, that's what comes to mind for, for me. Do I drive by and think that that looks like an eyesore? No, I've never really thought of it as an eyesore, especially when I see the kids inside running and playing, having a good time. So the other thing that really comes to mind, and I don't know, you know, our safety services reference on this and likely say, oh, no, it's never happened, a car's never plowed through there, gotten swirly and, you know, weather and inclement, whatever, the kids probably not on the football field, but I'd hate to see a car somehow end up on the field. But that's also the thing that, on Old Seventy-Four. But we're going to have more traffic coming through there with the transportation improvement, you know, I believe, too. So those are the things that are on my mind. But I fundamentally think we handle this with, you know, potentially putting that forward as a staff review item for what a, a barrier may be, and that may be pursuit of the landscaping buffering. Or I'm really more of a proponent of the walk, walk-through permeable type of fence that I think would, would mitigate the safety concerns and, and still allow it to be accessible to the community.
I'm sure the church has talked about insurance liabilities, and that goes with any business or anything. I mean, I'm sure they've, that's, I mean, unfortunately, that's not in my mind, because that's, that's their responsibility. I mean, they know what the, they're giving this to the community, and they kind of know the risk they're taking as well. So that's, that's, that's on them, whether they have a fence or don't have a fence. My only concern with a fence or barrier is simply safety, the ball rolling out the road or, and, yeah. So for me personally, I think I agree with Mr. Becker is roll with it, but also I want to put a contingency on this motion. And so I'll need some language, Ms. Ayers, if you could think of something off the top of your head of, of down the future, if we realize that, you know, soccer ball, footballs are going out in the road constantly, and our police are constantly getting called, whatever it's causing accidents, wherever, we can, we can enforce that in the future. So that's my thoughts. What are your thoughts, Mr. Becker?
Mr. Chairman, I did come up with a draft clause.
Appreciate that. Makes my life easier.
I will defer to Ms. Ayers, who's an attorney and a lot better at this kind of stuff than I am, but just simply a clause at, at the end of the motion, that just simply says contingent upon no public safety issue developing in perpetuity.
I'd like to include though, something about the township can enforce some kind of, it doesn't have to be fencing, but barrier of some sort. Does that, does that, does that resolve that, Ms. Ayers, his addition?
I have some concerns about putting a contingency on here in perpetuity, that there's some question of legal enforceability later in time. So I would suggest maybe if we want to look at that, that we put some language in here So I would suggest maybe if we want to look at that, that we put some language in here about, you know, there'll be a review at a particular mark that says, "Hey, in one year, we will examine where the traffic has been, and if there's been any concerns for traffic concern, and public safety, and review it at that time."
I disagree. I want my police chief to call and say, "Hey, enough's enough. It's been two months. They opened it up, and this is a disaster. I need a barrier, not a year from now."
Well, let me clarify.
So and then we, we shut it down, and then we wait, and they can't open until they put a barrier up?
Mike, and I maybe perhaps didn't say that eloquently enough, but there needs to be some limit on the condition. So we have up to a year to have that review or some.
Oh, I see.
So that it is not, my concern about the legal enforceability is saying in perpetuity, twenty years from now, we're gonna have problems enforcing a condition that we put on now. So saying, "Hey, we have up to a year to assess that concern," gives you a little bit more legal enforceability.
Or if the problem doesn't develop until two years from now?
We would have to address it like the condition isn't there, or you could say two years, but we need to have some limit. In perpetuity gives me some concern about legal enforceability.
And, and, and what's in your gut, what's in your risk analysis of that for an issue? What defines an issue? That's what I'm getting at, my mind. So acceptable approach you're both putting forward on that, really trying to meet you that way for the fence. But I'm thinking something to effect of roll with it without the fence, but it's, if there, it generates three calls for service within a one-year period, that should also be part of the review or part of the one-year review. If you're generating calls for service, right? So if you're a police, fire. It's something, right?
I want language in here that says basically, Chief Reese calls the guys, "Enough's enough. Put, put a barrier up." But I get what you're saying. There's gotta be a time limit on it. I understand that. What, what is fair and reasonable?
What's the, what's the maximum legally we can go? If we can't go in perpetuity, we get twenty years, ten years, five years?
I don't have a number for you off the top of my head. You know, if I'm making a suggestion, I would say no more than five years.
Then we, we agree on a number, and then if it becomes a legal issue, three, four, five years?
Mark, you got something?
Yeah.
A logical number you could use is related to the length of your permits. It should be two years if substantially complete, or if it's up to another year.
So two to three years, what you're saying?
Which seems like a logical amount of time for you to be able to figure out if there's a problem or not.
I'm with that.
Okay.
I'd be agreeable with that.
Fair enough. Let's do that. So.
Three years.
All right, so Ms. Ayers, what's the language? Let's do three years. What language do you want me to use in this motion?
The approved conditioned upon the recommended modifications, as well as conditioned upon there being no public safety concern raised within a period of three years.
Correct. Do you have that written down by chance?
I will.
Okay, I can write that down. I'm sorry, I was, I was just listening.
You would just, if someone would like to make the motion subject to those restrictions, then we could move from there, and we'll make sure it gets into the written documentation.
Perfect. Okay. Subject to written conditions. Okay. Just wanna make sure we get this right. All right, perfect. Easy enough. I like the project. It's gonna go through. But I think, I think those conditions are fair. I think that's fair. Makes sense. So let's do that. All right, gentlemen, I'm entertaining a motion for Union Township zoning case five dash two-three dash Zeez and Zulu. Bear with me, it's a lot of numbers. Request for a zone map amendment from residential R two, business B one, to planned development by applicant First Baptist Church of Glen Estee at location around ten-thirty Old State Route Seventy-four, parcels four-one-three-two-two-zero-zero-zero-five, four-one-three-two-two-zero-zero-zero-six, four-one-three-two-two-zero-zero-zero-seven, totaling three point three-two-seven acres, subject to the written conditions. Does that seem right, Ms. Ayers?
As, the written conditions, as well as the additional condition of no major public safety concerns for a period of three years.
Holy crap. Do you have that written down?
Yep, we're good. You just made that, is that the motion?
Good.
Second.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
All right, moving on to Union Township zoning case twelve dash nine-three dash Zeez and Zulu. Mr. McCormick, please take over.
Okay. For this particular request, the applicant is C E R Services Incorporated. The owner is Mountain Agency Eastgate LLC, and the applicant is requesting a major amendment of a planned development district for an eleven point three-six-five acre property, with the parcel number indicated on the first slide and on the upper part of the staff report on page one. This is for, in order to redevelop a portion of the site to establish a new Hyundai sales and service center. Location of the property is on the south side of thirty-two, on the southwestern quarter of, corner of State Route Thirty-two in Glenwill Lake Lane. State Route Thirty-two is a divided principal arterial five-lane roadway with a right turn lane and with a traffic volume of approximately forty thousand, forty-three thousand average daily trips in the area of the proposed project. The zoning of the property is planned development, and you can see what is around it to the northwest. To the north is predominantly planned development. To the southwest is R three residential. To the south and to the southeast is industrial, and to, and just across Glenwill Lake Lane is business. In terms of the applicable sections of code from Article Six, Sections six-eighty to six-eighty-seven are, are the applicable sections with respect to planned development within the zoning resolution. And I've included several of those sections, part of those sections in this, in a couple of slides here with the note at the bottom that the board should make appropriate findings of fact as part of the decision-making process. Here is the aerial of the site with topography, two-foot contours. So this site is in the central thirty-two, State Route Thirty-two retail corridor in the comprehensive plan, which is the primary retail and commercial corridor of the township. Among other things, the plan calls for architectural standards that promote cohesive and attractive design, enhance quality of life, additional investment, shared driveway and parking configurations where practical, and site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency in the field development. And for commercial development, the use of traditional building materials is also called for. Background on the site, so the, this is part of the Jeff Wyler Auto Mall. Planned development, which has been in existence for more than three decades, with a bulk of activity consisting of the used car dealership on this particular property, and automobile inventory area and an overflow inventory area adjacent to Clepper Lane. As time has passed, several properties have been added to the planned development as a result of property acquisition. The owner received an approval to construct a new eleven thousand seven hundred fifteen square foot Mazda dealership, which is the building to the west of the proposed redevelopment effort, which is the building that's kind of in the middle of this property. The twelve thousand square foot car dealership happened shortly after the Mazda approval in two thousand and fourteen. The applicant now seeks to redevelop that used car facility, add on to it, and basically meet the new standards for the Hyundai dealerships. Here is an overlay of the proposed plans. You can see how the building would change. The additions are outlined here in the darker color, and there's some changes here to that hatched area as well. The rest of the parking configuration, there wouldn't be much of a change at all. There would be a slight potential change here where there would be a parking pad and some signage, and I'll, I'll show you that here in a few moments. Overall, the planned development proposal appears to be consistent with the prior approvals for the Jeff Wyler site, as well as previous approvals for this central retail corridor. While some architectural elements still need to be confirmed, the project will enhance the investment associated with the site, promote cohesive and attractive design, and the use is compatible with the current onsite surroundings. Access to the site is adequate, given the current configurations, including via Clepper Lane, which is a minor collector with an average daily traffic of four thousand three hundred and six vehicles per day, which is going to go up, I think, now that it's been reconfigured in that area. There's a new sidewalk along the south portion of Clepper Lane, which is part of the aforementioned road improvements. And although there's not a landscaping plan for additional landscaping for this particular project, this is in line with what's been approved previously at the township for the car dealerships on this property and some of the adjacent properties. As far as the proposed signage, there's one new additional sign proposed, and a potentially replacement size, or sign of the same size in the same location for the latter, the form of which would require relief. In conversations with the staff, the applicant has expressed new signs, I'll show here in a moment, which can be of different sizes. That is being required by the Hyundai dealership as part of their overall look and design. In accordance with Sections six-eighty, six-eighty-seven, the board trustees' roles processes are into motion to approve, approve with modifications, or deny the applicant's request as submitted. So here's another view of the proposed plan. Orientation's a little different, so you get a little better view of what's going on here on the site. These are the renderings, some of the renderings associated with, with the new Hyundai's look like. And here's another one. The new proposed sign would be next to this parking pad that, that is proposed there in the front of the property. This would not necessarily look, this is not the site that we're looking at. It would look different. The building's flipped, I think, and then, of course, there's no curb cut here like you see in this picture. But what's important to take away from this picture is the pad and the signage. There's the oblique image looking north of the existing property. You can see Glenwill Lake Lane here, feeding back to the area where there's the retention pond, the adjacent businesses, and then the township own property there in the rear. Here are some pictures of the property. This is looking northwest from the site at Clepper Lane. This is looking southeast from the site at Clepper Lane. This is looking west from the site at the signage on Clepper Lane. This is a long thirty-two near the front from the Mazda dealer looking across the front of the property to the east. This is looking north across the site towards Holman's. This is looking southeast, probably in the area towards the proposed pad and new sign. This is looking southwest at the existing facility, the used car megastore. Where that would be remodeled. This is looking southwest and northwest, looking at the site. Most of the improvements would be on the left-hand side. There's a temporary building there that you can see on the far left side that's been erected for the time being. It's, I think, only gonna be there a couple of months. This is looking southwest towards the area where a lot of the proposed addition improvements would be. In terms of the recommended modifications, the applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies. The applicant would need to provide some additional information with respect to proposed primary structure improvements to ensure that the architectural standards and proposed building materials do in fact meet the requirements and standards. Looks like they, they will. It's, it's just we need to figure out what the final materials are going to be. The signage package would ultimately need to be revised and included with relief on the one additional sign by the parking pad. We would need an updated photometric site lighting plan. We received a photometric site lighting plan, but there were, there's potentially one area that would be left to address. And I have been in communication with the applicant's representatives about that, so we have made some progress on that. And then there are a couple items that were a zoning permit that would need to be addressed ultimately that we, that we've included as item five in the staff report, recommended modifications. With that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Mr. McCormick, good job. Can you go back to the main site plan? The, the old and the new. So, so am I understanding this correctly? Layman's terms, we're basically giving a facelift to the existing one and adding those two additional parts along. Is that right?
Yeah, these gray areas are the two additions. There's some additional work being done, I think, in the crosshatched area. And then the other difference is there's a new sign in this parking pad in the front.
Got, okay, just, just break it down easy. Uh, Mr. Becker, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any objections or concerns at all. I, I appreciate they're expanding, and all looks good in there.
Mr. Logue, do you think, Mr. McCormick? No, thank you, Mr. McCormick. All right, great. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. And then if you could leave that slide up, yeah. And then this is a public hearing's case. I'll go ahead and open this case up. Is there anyone that would like to speak that is a proponent, that is for this case? Okay, great. Please, come up, sir. I'll get it and swear in, if that's okay? Mr. Ray, hand you, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, anything but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Great. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Wolfe. I'm the project manager for Mark Dookus Architecture. We do the drawings. The address is ninety-two hundred, excuse me, Glenwill Road, Building F, Suite Twenty-three A.
Perfect.
Sorry.
It's okay, don't, don't worry about it.
First speaking engagement since COVID, so it's a little nervous.
It's okay. No sweat. You're good.
I can answer any questions you have. Yes, on that flip end, the crosshatch area. Currently, there's a covered display area, and we are basically recapturing that as internal space for the building.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's pretty, pretty kind of dry. I think the new sign's a nice facelift. The whole building's getting a nice facelift. They're adding on to the building. I'm glad to see business is good. Sounds like you're predicting that you're gonna sell more cars there. Good for the economy, or I can, I have nothing. I'm, I'm good. Mr. Becker, do you have anything for him?
I just to clarify, so is Hyundai, is that, is that a new product line for Jeff Wyler? Or is this something that they've been selling for quite a while?
I'm doing three dealerships with them right now, so it certainly requires them. There isn't one in the current area, so I can't answer as yet after the district.
So he doesn't have a Hyundai dealership in Eastgate, but there is one up in Route Four.
Okay, so this is, so the Hyundai dealership is new to...
And, and for clarity's sake, this is a used car department that's being transformed into a new car Hyundai dealership. Okay, just for you.
Does that include Kia? Is that believed? Is that two different?
That's.
I hear them always the same sentence.
That's, that's.
When I went through the news.
It's Ford Chevy. It's two different.
I thought they were a related company. All right. Uh, no, I'm good.
Great. Mr. McCormick, do you have anything for him, sir?
Nothing additional. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, good job. Appreciate you, sir, very much. Yeah, thank you. Is there anything else that would like to be, speak as a proponent of this project, for the zoning case? Great. Okay, seeing none. I'll go and close that. Is there anyone that is an opponent of this case? Okay, seeing none. I'll go and close public participation, and we'll move on. Gentlemen, go and open up our discussion. I think it's pretty kind of dry, nothing crazy. Any, any discussion?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Luke?
I think it looks good.
Great. Let's go ahead and I'll make, entertain a, entertain a motion for Union Township zoning case twelve dash nine-three dash Zeez and Zulu. A request for a planned development major amendment for C E R Services Incorporated by owner, Mountain Agency Eastgate LLC, for site at one-one-one-seven State Route Thirty-two, parcel number four-one-three-one-zero-three-one-three-four-nine, totaling eleven point three-six-five acres.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Okay, move on to our next zoning case, union case, Union Township zoning case nine dash two-three dash O is an Oscar. Mr. McCormick, go and take over, sir.
Okay, for this particular case, the applicant is Charles Frankis. The property location is eleven thirty-six Old State Route Seventy-four, parcel number four-one-four-eight-zero-two-a-zero-nine-two, on a point nine-nine acre site that is located within the Summerside Willville mixed-use focus overlay. So this is an overlay district plan, and you see the property is located on the northern portion, northern side of Old State Route Seventy-four in this particular area, between that part where Old State Route Seventy-four and Schoolhouse Road intersects and Old State Route Seventy-four and Kitty Lane intersect. And that area, Old State Route Four, is a minor arterial two-lane road with the average daily volume traffic being ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-six, a little lower than what we saw a few moments ago for the other project. I propose, or the existing zoning is business with the abutting properties being along Seventy-four, on that side of the road being business, and what is directly behind the property being business. Across the street, there's the Holman's P D, and a little bit away from the property to the north is residential, as far as the zoning. The relevant sections of code are in Article Thirteen of the zoning resolution, in terms of the description and purpose of the focus areas, and the process for those. Board of Trustees' roles to consider the applications, make appropriate findings of fact, and then adopt a motion to approve, deny the applications, potentially with modifications. So as I noted earlier, the project is in the Old Seventy-four Summerside Willville Corridor. The two thousand and thirty comprehensive plan acknowledges this area of the township as suitable for limited commercial expansion and redevelopment. Plan also indicates the northern portion of the corridor, as I mentioned, for the first case is most appropriate for neighborhood-oriented uses. One of the other things, the comprehensive plan also calls for shared driveway configurations where practical, for maximizing land use efficiency within field development, and for commercial redevelopment and development, the use of traditional building materials, the deployment of adequate vegetative buffering, and landscaping strategies along shared property lines, and the addition of landscaping enhancements along the corridor, with also efforts being made to implement noise and/or light pollution.
With also efforts being made to implement noise and/or light pollution reduction strategies wherever practical. So a pause there for a moment. So this is in the Summerside-Willeville area, which is a neighborhood for quality corridor, a little different than the commercial corridors, as you see at the bottom of page two of the staff report. The background of the site, the property has been used for outside storage, which you can see from the two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three aerial here, that there's some storage still on the property, and you'll see in the pictures from the inspection that there's still some storage on the property. It's a gravel lot that has kind of started to become overgrown with some vegetation as well, with random assortment of storage containers on the site. Looks like the storage use, outside storage use, has been there for about ten years. Majority of the surrounding property, though, noted for zoning, matches the zoning that you see there, majority of it being business, with the difference being that the rear of the property, even though the properties are zoned business, they are being used for more of a multifamily residential use. This is the proposed overlay of the plan for the automated self-storage facility that's being requested. There's three buildings, and you can see the setbacks noted even there. This is, if you zoomed it in and really looked at it, what's being proposed. Applicant has provided, in the last day or so, an additional document that I put behind the report for you to look at that I'm sure they will address. The conceptual review of the site plan reveals that the three storage units are self-drive-up facilities. Two of the proposed buildings are supposed to be thirty by a hundred and sixty feet, with the third being a thirty by a hundred and forty-foot building. Total, that's thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet of storage buildings in the lot. Majority of the surface proposed on the site is gravel, which would require some relief. The access that you see here on the east side of the property is proposed to be paved, and then essentially, once they had, the people that would enter the site reaches the gate, they would enter the property, which would be all gravel as proposed. Again, that's an item that would require relief. The front setback and rear setback would also require relief, essentially because the rear yard butts into the, or the property butts into residential use. Normally, that setback would increase to a hundred feet, and the front yard setback would be forty feet from the edge of right-of-way, which has moved because of the proposed improvements. So you have about a hundred and ninety-nine, if I remember correctly, feet to work with from Old Seventy-four. If you literally subtracted the setback area, you'd have about fifty feet to work with. And so the applicant's asking for relief for both the front and rear setbacks to cite three buildings there. Currently, none of the proposed buildings consist of any traditional building materials as required by the zoning resolution and the Conference of Plan for this particular corridor. So here are some views of what the buildings are proposed to look at, look like, with an idea of what the landscaping might look like. The landscaping, because of where the road right-of-way is, potentially might have to be located behind the fence, and so you'd actually potentially see the fence, and then what you see there in front of this, the fence in this particular picture. Same here with this particular picture. And then this is a kind of a view, the entrance area. We do not have a signage package submitted, although some mention is made of, and although some mention is made of proposed landscaping along Seventy-four, bushes and moles, we don't really have a detailed landscaping plan. We just have the reference to those things and what we see here in these pictures. There's no lighting plan to be submitted. However, the applicant has noted that the facility will feature eco-friendly lighting. I think there's a reference to solar lighting in there as well. I mentioned earlier the action required from the Board of Trustees from Article thirteen, Section thirteen-ten already. Here's the oblique image of the site, looking to the north, kind of zoomed out a little bit. You can see the outside storage is a little more significant here than what was on the slide for the most recent aerial that we have. In terms of the pictures that we took on the site, this is looking from the access point along Seventy-four. You can see at the time I was out there, they were doing some paving work there in front of the property and the adjacent properties. Site's on the right. This is looking southeast. Part of the site would be on the left. And that is the access area there, essentially where you start seeing pavement and/or gravel. This is looking across the site towards Holman's in the southwest. This is looking northwest from the access drive and the fence into the site. This is looking southeast back towards the entrance, and Seventy-four is in the background there. This is looking northeast across the site to the rear. So the rear area, where you see the vegetation, is where the property meets up with the multifamily residential uses that are zoned business. This is looking northwest across the site. See a bit of the rear property line, and then also the side that's there. This is looking northwest across the back and the side there. This is looking from the back of the property towards the front to the southwest. In terms of the recommended modifications, there were seven noted. Those do not count the items that I had noted previously that are, involve relief in terms of the front setback, the rear setback, and the use of gravel versus having paved surface on the property. The first being the need to address any concerns from related other agencies. The second being that there would be a need to provide, for the applicant to provide a more robust landscaping plan, particularly for the front and rear of the property. We would need a signage plan to be submitted, with the signage, freestanding signage being capped at a height of no more than ten feet from finished grade. We would potentially need a photometric and site lighting plan to be submitted. We would recommend that no outs, there would be no allowance of outside storage, especially if all three buildings are built as currently proposed. Because basically, there wouldn't really be any room for outside storage. Unless relief is given, at least fifty percent of the proposed building materials visible from Old Seventy-four would need to be changed to be traditional building materials or high-quality building materials, as defined in the zoning resolution and the Conference of Plan. This is an item that could be addressed administratively. And then the last item here, there are some, a number of administrative items that would potentially need to be addressed for any subsequent commercial zoning permit. There, a lot of those are more minor insignificant items compared to what's already been referenced. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Mr. McCormick, thank you. Can you, so they're asking for, is it number five or seven zoning changes?
So there are five potential areas of relief, what you might call otherwise a variance.
Okay. And, and the, walk me through each one really quickly.
One would be the front setback.
Front setback, okay. So the front, front setback, and our requirements are currently...
Forty feet.
Forty feet. What are they asking for?
It looks like it's about twenty-five feet. And the rear would be a hundred feet, and we're...
One hundred from residential, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're at about twenty-five.
So they're asking for seventy-five foot variance?
Yes, approximately. And then the use of gravel throughout the site, instead of just having the entrance paved.
All right, hold on one second, writing this down. Okay, just, yep.
And the use of traditional high-quality building materials.
Got it.
At least from Old, the visibility of Old Seventy-four, half of what would not be a window or door would have to be included.
Yep.
And the fifth potentially involving landscaping. Don't know for sure on that one yet, because we don't have a defined landscaping plan, but just from what we have so far, it looks like there would be some deficiencies.
Did you mention signage?
As of right now, we do not have any information to indicate that there's a need for any kind of signage relief.
Oh, okay.
But we do need a plan for signage if, if the project were to move forward.
I guess they don't have to have a sign.
Not right now. There's a picture of a sign and a couple of the, that I showed here, that right there.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. That's all I have. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
I know. You asked a great question. I was sitting here kind of making my own list that you just reviewed with Mr. McCormick. No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Loeb, sorry.
Great questions. Yep, good.
Okay, great. This is a zoning case. I'll go and open it up for public discussion, and we'll start with anyone that is a proponent that is for this zoning case. Come on forward. Okay, great. If you both are going to be speaking, I do have to swear you both in, which is okay. You both can come up. I just got to swear you both in. All right, we'll do both at the same time. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So have you got?
I do.
Great, great. And then please both state your name and address for the records.
Charles Frankis, Charlie Frankis. I'm the applicant. My address is eight-three-nine-six One Foot Drive.
Mark Hofalt, Charlie's partner. My address is eleven oh-six West Dressfield.
Great, great, perfect, great. Please, yeah, gentlemen, go ahead.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. So I lived in the township for fourteen years. I worked in the township when I was in college. My partner Mark runs a business on Mount Parnell Basket Road in the township.
Premier Insurance, right across from the school.
Oh, okay, great, great.
Members of the community. We saw an opportunity here with a neglected lot that's more or less an eyesore. We investigated whether or not we could turn it into profitable, profitable business, and we believe that we can. However, in order to do so, we need a few relief variances.
Okay, great, great. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions at all for him? I have a few, but I need to gather my thoughts. That's all right.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Loeb, do you have anything for him?
No, not this time. I want to break it down.
I didn't look at this. How long have you folks owned the land, owned the property?
We haven't purchased it yet. It's in contract.
Got it.
We haven't closed yet.
LFS Realty LLC. Who is LFS Realty?
Yeah, it's the current owner.
Okay.
I'll just address a couple of things. I mean, the rendering doesn't show it, but we're fine with changing the face of the buildings to be, you know, compliant with the high-quality building materials and all of that. The biggest issue, frankly, that we have is the space. The setbacks really, as Mr. McCormick said, you know, really render the lot unusable. You have this little tiny square in the middle is all that you could put a building on, which is why we're asking for the additional space.
I do have a question.
Please, please, go ahead.
So what kind of, you know, so it's a one-acre lot, round numbers. What, and it seems like there's multiple, I guess, small businesses, maybe a dentist office. I'm thinking one acre, that'd be plenty of room to put some kind of business in there that wouldn't require, you know, setbacks and the other issues that you're having?
Possibly. We're not dentists, though.
I'm not in...
Small store of some sort?
Perhaps.
Liquor store?
I don't know anything about building those.
That's not in our, in our wheelhouse area of expertise. What I can say is it's, it's been sitting like that for at least the past ten years, and so far maybe it's tough to do that with it.
And I currently own Storage Plus. It's in Amelia. It's right next to Starlight Drive-In. So I've owned a storage facility for seven years now. I know how to do it. I mean, it's going to look nice. It's going to look a lot better than the lot as it sits today. We're not going to have any outside storage, so it'll be clean. It'll be tidy. You know, I don't see, you know, it being an eyesore or, you know, a hindrance to what you're trying to accomplish on the corridor.
By the way, I appreciate you coming in and wanting to fix the property. I was going to respectfully beat you up if you were the current owners, but then I scratched it off my, I was not, yeah, I was going to, so, but never mind. Forget that. I scratched it off my list. So concern is, okay, what about the residents behind you? So you're asking for, basically, there's a hundred-foot, you know, leadway between your building and the residents behind you. There's several residential buildings right behind you, and you're asking for a seventy-five-foot variance to basically have a twenty-five-foot buffer, basically. Question would be is, how would you feel if you were those residents?
Well, two, two comments. First of all, it's not a business that is going to be non-stop traffic, right? It's, it's a few cars a day in and out. It's not the type of business that's going to be causing a commotion in that respect. To address the residents behind, though, there's all kind of options as far as landscaping that you can do. I mean, the first thing that comes to mind, which is probably the best barrier, are those small pine trees that are thin, that grow about twenty-five feet tall. Just line the fence with them, and you've got a natural solid wall. You can't see through that, and it'll block the sound as well. And there's no maintenance on them.
And if I may, that's a, that's an excellent point. In the current condition of the property, I would say it's more of a safety hazard. So what we're proposing is to not only clean it up, but make everything more visible, add lighting restricted to the property, install some metal plan on, and security cameras. Right now, it's unguarded. It's dark. People are dumping trash, tires, and who knows what else could be going on right here in their homes. So they need to respect the business that has security on it. I would, I would welcome it as a resident.
Fair enough. And yeah, you might be absolutely right. They might love it, because right now it doesn't look very nice and pleasing. Or they might hate it. I don't know. I guess we'll find out in a second, but...
Like I said, the businesses are on either side, but they've, they've been there for some time. So, you know, I can, you know, again, I don't want to be disrespectful to those businesses, but ours is going to be new, shiny. I mean, they're going to look great compared to our neighbors. I mean, you know, and also, as far as the setback on the front, on Old Seventy-four, we did, when Mr. McCormick was out there, we took an eye shot, and even with that twenty-five-foot setback, we are further off the road than probably four or five of our neighbors going on either direction. So we're still going to be back further than what the neighbors are going to be.
Mr. McCormick, can you confirm what they just said? Is that correct?
They are, you can see on the, sorry.
You can see on the proposed overlay, it's very close. Some of the, some of the users up the road are pretty close. Like this one here is definitely closer to the road. When we were out standing at the property, it looked like there was another one. Maybe it was that one there. So it's kind of in that general area. A lot of these are situated fairly close together, like what you saw here. The neighboring property there, it's, I mean, the way these overlays, I mean, I do the best I can, but it's probably within, it's less than five-foot difference, I would say. Probably more in the variety of two-to-three foot difference.
My, my actual concern isn't more so the roadway, because it seems pretty darn even based off my eye test. It's more of the residential behind down the road. But, okay, thought, thoughts on... Again, I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Let me ask you this. So next to us is Auto Repair, right? I don't know what he fixes, but he fixes a bunch of stuff. So he's got...
Tell me the one to the left or the right?
To the right.
Okay.
Okay, so he's got machines, drills, air compressors, all kind of noisy, loud equipment going on. I'm not going to have any of it. I mean, it's going to be a couple of cars going in and out every day. I mean, if, if I live behind there, I would have more probably complaint with that type of business versus a couple of buildings that are just sitting.
It's a good argument.
That's my thing.
It's a good argument. Thoughts on, thoughts on it being paved instead of gravel?
It's gravelled now. It's a huge expense. You're talking about eight dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
The one that I built in, it's a, well, it's half in Monroe Township, half at Tavy Township, but we compromised and did what, what we're asking for you guys to allow us to do is pave the entranceway, you know, that'll prevent potholes and, you know, skidding and gravel coming in and out and all of that kind of stuff. But if you'll allow us to maintain the gravel, and the gravel that's there now is wrecked, I mean, we're going to top it and make it look nice and all of that, but, yeah.
Good. Mr. Becker, do you have any more questions? Mr. Loeb?
No, no, it's silent.
No more questions?
Okay.
So in the future, Mr. McCormick, so they still need to present a landscaping plan for both the front and the back, but we'll address the back. We'll address the back probably later on in discussion. Also signage plan as well, is that correct?
Yes.
And is there anything else in the future that I'm not thinking of that they would need to submit? Lighting as well, what about lighting?
Yes, lighting, photometric. There are some minor items, but the minor items aren't really worth mentioning. They're the things that are kind of on everyone's list to do.
Fair enough, fair enough, okay.
I can address the lighting. We're gonna use solar. They're mounted to the tops of the building, so they're not on poles. So they're not gonna be, you know, real high up.
Sure.
And they're dusted on. They come on, you know, like a, a lower, you know, just all the time, and then when they have motion, they come on bright, so.
Great, okay, great, perfect. Gentlemen, that's all I have. Yeah, thank you both very much. Yeah, yeah, good job. Thanks for answering all the questions. Thank you.
I did want to point out, because I forgot which I did ask, that there will not be any onsite employee, because sometimes that is a, there's like an office associated with the storage units.
Yeah, I fear it's automated, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's automated, yeah.
So there's, there's no need for like an onsite parking space for someone there. There's no bathroom.
Yeah, makes sense, perfect. Yeah, thank you, Mr. McCormick. And then continue on. Is there anyone else that is a proponent, that is in favor of this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Is there anyone that is an opponent of this case, that is against this? Okay, seeing none. We'll go and close public discussion. Gentlemen, open for discussion now. Mr. Becker, thoughts?
I hate the proposal for multiple reasons. You outlined, I don't know, half a dozen items where it falls short of our zoning requirements. You know, I'm, I'm holding out hope that, you know, a convenience store or a professional building, professional office building of some sort, you know, small, would be a better use of that property. You know, those are my thoughts. I'm opposed to it.
Is there anything that would make you in favor of it?
Yeah, a different, a whole different concept, and meeting our requirements in the zoning code.
I'm not gonna discriminate what business necessarily goes in there. I'm just talking about the zoning requirements in general, so.
It's a matter of what's the best use of the property, and in my opinion, that is not the best use of the property in that location.
Okay, okay. Mr. Logue?
Yeah, just a couple of things that I wrote down that I don't think is gonna be supported. Pavement throughout, sidewalk plan in front, I would want, typically, when we have projects move forward, we encourage sidewalk plans so that we can develop a walkable community. So that's missing. The signage plan, landscaping plan, I mean, there's too much left of the imagination there. And then to what Mr. Becker's point, the setback variances, I think that's, you know, it's too little brought forward, too much left of the imagination, and too much ask of variance from, from where we're at. Photometric lighting, I know we heard solar, but photometric lighting, and then with the pavement comes the, you know, it has to be part of water and, and whatever type of drainage that that naturally displaces. So those are the concepts that come to mind. I do see the facility here that's the Storage Plus in Amelia by. I believe it's a similar concept, and then, yeah, I know the applicant, they're amenable to higher-quality materials, but I think that that's, from what I'm hearing, it's a moot point at this point. This is the, Mr. McCormick, help correct me. This is the, this is the first time forward. They've not been to zoning commission, right? It's coming directly to the board of trustees first?
That is correct, because it's an overlay plan in the business, in the property's own business.
And the property is zoned as business?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's asking for the specific change for the overlay district plan, right?
Is it overlay district plan with a, that involves a number of relief measures, variances, variance-type items?
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately for the applicant, I'm not supportive of, of the plan presented.
You know, reviewing every, all the information coming into this, I was, I was, I was, and also because I knew it was, it was kind of a storage area. I didn't realize, I don't know why in my mind I think this way. I didn't realize it was new owners. I thought it was the existing one. And honestly, I was planning on beating them up a little bit respectfully over it. And, and then that kind of changed things, because these are investors. I can't, I can't look at what business I do and don't want, Mr. Becker, from that perspective. I understand why you would be against this, but if hypothetically they did, say, yeah, we're going to meet all the zoning requirements, I can't vote no whether I like my business or not. I can't discriminate against my business. I do couple, couple of address, so they addressed the material issues. That's no longer an issue for me. I do really wish it was paved instead of gravel. And I don't like the zoning variances for as the buffer between the road and the back. However, you brought up a good point, good to the other surrounding businesses. Interesting. Let me think for a second. It's gonna be awkward, but just, I gotta think.
Is the applicant amenable to pavement, sidewalk? Mr. Dills, I didn't hear you say anything about sidewalk plan.
I didn't ask the question about sidewalk. That was my mistake. I didn't think.
Is it a concern for you?
Well, yeah, we need sidewalks, a lot more sidewalks in Union Township, so I would, yeah, I'd like to have sidewalks on almost every road if I could. Okay. Okay, any further discussion, gentlemen? Good? Okay, all right, all right. Take my mind's way now, all right. So you know, for the discussion, so I, I think, I think everything has to be done as a positive when I entertain a motion. So gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to vote on Union Township zoning case nine dash two-three dash O as an Oscar, request for overlay district plan approval for Charles Frankis, hopefully pronounced that correctly, apologies if not, for site one-one-three-six, Old State Route Seventy-four, parcel four-one-four-eight-zero-two, A as in Alpha, zero-nine-two, totaling point nine-nine acres, right at one acre, for property within the Summerside Willowville Mixed Use Focus Area Overlay Commercial Corridor.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Mr. Logue?
No.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion?
Fails.
Fails.
Okay. Sorry, gentlemen. Yeah, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, is there any other old business to discuss? Miss Ma'am? Oh, okay, great. Okay, seeing none, new business consent agenda. All right, gentlemen, let me read this off. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda, the approval of minutes for September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting minutes, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three zoning minutes, approval of payments as prepared by fiscal officer Ron Campbell, and approval of monthly financial report as prepared by fiscal officer Ron Campbell. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
No, no discussion. Great. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion, agenda. So Ms. Ayers, would you like to read off our, sorry, let me focus here. Purchase orders exceeding ten thousand dollars as prepared by our administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
Thank you, sir. First matters Total Quality Logistics LLC for August twenty twenty-three Economic Development reimbursement amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Brick regading for miscellaneous legal fees, fifty thousand. U.S. Postal Service Retail Postage for fifty thousand. Hurricane Enterprises LLC for newsletter printing for fifteen thousand. Fleet Corps Technologies for fuel usage in the Police Department, fifteen thousand dollars. Georgetown Marble and Granite for cemetery, new columbarium, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Otter Equipment Service LLC for two post lifts for the service garage, fourteen thousand, six hundred. The Dwyer Company for Veterans Park Restroom Wall and Floor Stabilization, amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Great, thank you. And then before I entertain a motion, gentlemen, either one of you have questions for Ms. Ayers?
I do.
Great.
The, I think I wanted to ask Mr., ask Matt this question, has to do with the two post lifts for the service garage?
Yes, sir.
Fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Describe those. What is that? Is it, is this new? Is this replacing something?
It is a replacement. The current one is a safety concern. It is grinding into the metal, and it is no longer. So years ago, we didn't pay anything for this lift, per se. It was in a facility that the township had purchased, where the Glen is now, next door to us. The facility that was there had a two-post lift, so we took it and installed it in the garage. And then we have used it for purposes, obviously for maintenance, for the mechanic. It is limited only to cruisers, and, because that's all the capacity that it had. And it is now starting to grind into the metal. It has, it's lived its useful life. The new lift will lift everything except for our large dump trucks, five-fifties now. And then we are gonna relocate it, because we're gonna kind of reorganize the shop, per se.
So the old one wore out and getting the new one to replace it?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Also, Mr. Taylor, then the, the next item on here, Veterans Park Restroom Wall Floor Stabilization. What's, what's going on with all that?
That's the, it is, it has some, in the men's restroom side, it has some significant cracks, whereas the foundation is shifting or there are voids underneath, but it is causing enough, it, it's not unsecured, but it is causing enough to where I can see some significant movement in the block. So this is to repair at ten piers. The piers have a lifetime guarantee on them. They go down into bedrock. So, and then there's also slabjacking, because when we lift, when we lift the block back up, the floor will then have a little bit of a gap, because the walls of the floor are separate. And then that will make the, I guess, true again, per se.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thanks. Spoke my questions, too.
That's all I have.
Mr. Logue, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase orders exceeding ten thousand dollars as recommended by our township administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. And then, Ms. Ayers, did you want to explain the Public Works Commission grant?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Baldwin Road has experienced slipping due to a landslide condition. We were looking for the most efficient way to get the road repairs done. We asked for authorization this evening to apply for Ohio Public Works Commission grants, along with Claremont County, to achieve some grant funding to get the work done. The total estimated requirement of repairs, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, rough numbers. We would be pledging match funds of about seventy-three thousand, three hundred ninety-five, for which we would receive a balance of a grant of two hundred and seventy-six dollars, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars roughly. We'd be entering into a cooperative agreement with Claremont County to apply for the grant and implement the project if awarded. If we're not awarded the grant, we would have no obligation to move forward or no expense, and we would go back to the drawing board on how to fix it. I did want to point out some of the pictures of Baldwin Road to help tell the story. There is some significant sliding and moving. This is not a repair that I would suggest waiting much longer to get finished.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ayers. Any questions for Ms. Ayers at all, gentlemen? Okay. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the application to the public, to the Ohio Public Works Commission for grant funds.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item, C, authorize application to state capital grant. Ms. Ayers, take it away.
Thank you, sir. Also, similarly, asking for authorization to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Claremont County Park District to jointly apply for state capital grant funds to put in a kayak canoe launch in Union Township on the Round Bottom Road area. This, again, if we, if we do not receive the grant, would have no obligation, but would allow us to access those grants potentially. We have been working since I got here about how do we activate some of our outdoor facilities and, and resources. There is not currently a kayak or canoe launch in Union Township. I do think this is an area of, of interest to the public and accessing that riverway. So at a previous meeting, we have engaged KZF architectures to design a boat launch that is respectful of the environment and this land that is owned on the Round Bottom Road area by the Claremont County Park District. What you can see is a rendering of what we would look for to build. The estimate is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is adjacent to the land that we purchased on Round Bottom Road, also near where Cincinnati Sands is going in. I think it will be a great resource for the community. We would be asking for authorization to enter into the cooperative agreement with the Park District, and then to jointly apply for the state capital grants. There is no additional out-of-pocket to the township. The Park District will be putting in some work in kind, and then we're discussing some of the funding that we put in for the land purchase around there and the roadwork that will access this property.
Great. Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Ayers?
Nope.
No.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to authorize application to state capital grant.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Ayers, last one. Item D, collective bargaining agreement ratification.
Thank you, sir. We have multiple units for employees for collective bargaining. We've been engaging in negotiations with AFSMI Ohio Council with regards to our service employees. Their contract, their collective bargaining agreement lasted until August thirty-first. We have reached a proposed agreement to present to you. This was ratified by the AFSMI unit on September the twentieth. The changes do involve a three-year contract with similar wage proposals and operation issues as we addressed with our police department in previous contracts. Mr. Taylor and I worked on this. We believe the operational issues are successfully and satisfactorily addressed for the township. Gives a similar package than what we've offered to other employees, which is necessary to move forward and ask for board to consider ratifying it as well this evening.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Ayers?
Nope.
Seeing none. I'm gonna go and read this in its entirety. So gentlemen, entertain a motion for the collective bargaining agreement ratification, motion to approve and execute the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the local two-four-six-one Ohio Council Eight and the Board of Trustees of Union Township effective through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Second. No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on. Item C, legislation agenda. Ms. Ayers, you want to go and read off that resolution?
Thank you. This involves a resolution twenty twenty-three four-six, a resolution adopting text amendments to the Union Township zoning resolution. As the boards are aware, we've been going through on a regular basis, trying to make some updates and modernizations to the zoning resolution. I will tell you, since I've been here, the top two issues I've heard with the zoning resolution are accessory structures and the keeping of chickens. This matter before you this evening is, has been approved previously by the zoning commission, involves resolving both of those issues. Very large-scale. Accessory structures are all of the extra things you put on your house, decking, sheds, things like that. There were some pretty restrictive rules regarding the total size available for those accessory structures. What we've done is set up a system by which you could have additional use of accessory structures, depending on the size of your lot, to acknowledge that we have some lots that are small, neighborhood lots, but we also have some larger lots that have some additional potential to use accessory structures. We would also ask you consider the updates for the keeping of chickens. This restricts to hens, not roosters, to keep the sound concerns. Has some restrictions related to the setbacks from other property lines, so that their neighbors are adequately shielded from the keeping of chickens in people's yards. Also provides for the potential penalties if animals are kept in unsanitary conditions that causes problems for the neighbors and the lot frontage required to keep them. So we'd ask board consider adopting both of these changes to the zoning resolution.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ayers? Okay, good. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to, for resolution two-zero-two-three-four-six, resolution adopting text amendments to the Union Township zoning resolution.
So moved.
Second. No discussion?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, on this topic, when I was in the General Assembly, this came, I think it was a bill that Tom Breckman had sponsored some years ago. It's kind of a hot topic in the state, and a lot of people wanting to do chickens. Not animal husbandry, but, you know, just, just to have eggs and keep them as kind of, you know, pets, if you will. I've always been supportive of that. For, as a trustee, I've had a number of people come to me, you know, since I've been a trustee, also wanting chickens. Now, there's some people on the other side who don't want them, thinking, you know, that it stinks and, and problems. I, I've not experienced that from being around chickens, but, you know, at least I haven't discovered odor to be a problem, although I suppose it could be. I, I think this is good to move forward on and allow people that, you know, within the constraints that we're to move forward on and allow people that, you know, within the constraints that we're putting in place here, I guess it's loosening up the constraints to allow people that want to do chickens and, you know, have eggs for their family, that they can move forward with it.
Yeah, well said. Mr. Logan?
I think it's, you know, I watched the zoning commission meet on this, but just on the aspect of accessory structure, I think it's great to be able to update this language. I know that they were... I feel like the zoning commission is happy to have their hands on some tangible changes that they've had to deal with over history. And I'm seeing some yes head nods over here right now from Mr. Wing. But, you know, stuff that didn't necessarily make sense. If it was a panhandle lot, people would be restricted from accessory buildings, what they would be able to do or not. So I think it's great to be able to, one, provide more freedom back to the residents that is still controlled. And then on chickens, yeah, for several years, I've heard about chickens. And I think Mr. Becker hit all the good highlights and points there. I just am appreciative of the board members serving alongside me to be able to help move these things forward for the community and be listening and responsive to the community. So look forward to it.
Well said. Ms. Ayers, I apologize. I should have asked you this question when I had the opportunity.
Sure.
Just layman's terms, for residents to know, the lot size to have chickens, can you just give us a basic understanding?
Mr. Rekormick, I'm correct. The restrictions here actually involve the size of the run and then the setbacks from other properties. So it indicates that there has to be no less than 20 feet from all property lines, not less than 10 feet from principal structures. So instead of looking at specific lot lines, it says how far it has to be from other residents.
With the fence requirement on certain sized lots, I'm looking for that one right now. That's understood.
Yeah. So you need a fence, obviously, 20 feet from any property line, and then 10 feet from any structure.
Yes.
Okay.
And the properties that are exceeding one acre are exempt from the fence requirement. They just have to put coop requirements. And then the chickens have to be enclosed in the coop from sun down to sun.
Fair enough. Okay. And then, as far as the decking requirements, I was blown away that this was... I didn't know that we enforced it this much. So whoever, Ms. Ayers or Mr. Rekormick, but can you explain what the old rules were, just very briefly, in layman's terms, and what the new ones are?
So on the accessory structures?
Yeah.
Accessory structures include garages, pole barns, sheds, decks, pool. So what you have is an allowance of one accessory building in residential areas and one storage shed. That's it. And you are capped currently in an R1 area at 1,000 square feet plus your 120 square foot shed and 750 feet in an R2 area. The proposed changes allow for you to have, based on your size of your property, more square footage and more number of accessory structures, particularly someone who might have several acres, where they might have the ability to put several more buildings or bigger buildings on their property. But with that, we also put a cap of 4,000 square feet. So if somebody's got a 10-acre property, they can't build something bigger than 4,000 square feet.
I see. Perfect. And also, the deck size as well. So if you had a monstrous home, much larger home, you were still restrained to having a small deck, right?
Yes.
Okay, now, now, obviously, that's opened up more, and you can have a deck that's more comparable to the size of your property, your house.
Yeah, and it's considered really part of the house at this point.
Correct. Okay, good. Good changes. Good changes for the residents. All right, good. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Good. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. I know we only got 15, 20 minutes left of items. However, I'm going to stick to my rule at eight o'clock, and I'm going to entertain a motion to recess for approximately five minutes.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're recessed at 8:10.
Great, thank you. I entertain a motion to exit recess.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're back in session at 8:18 PM.
Okay. Resolution approving overlay district plan of area 983, State Route 125. Ms. Ayers?
This is following our new practice about ratifying the zoning hearing decision from the last meeting. So this is the zoning hearing decision from last meeting.
Easy enough. Any questions from Ms. Ayers?
Nope.
Seeing none. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion for Resolution 2023-47, resolution approving the overlay district plan for area of 983, State Route 125.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Resolution 2023-48, resolution declaring certain public infrastructure improvements to be public... To be public purpose and establishing tax incremental equivalent fund. Ms. Ayers?
Yes. This matter sets up a TIF district for the new children's hospital site in Ivy Point and the associated agreements setting up the tax increment fund and establishing the necessary documents that any improvements can be reinforced from the TIF fund.
Great. Any questions from Ms. Ayers?
Yeah, what about the jet associated with that?
That will be at a later meeting, I anticipate, next month.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Gentlemen... Sorry, Ms. Logan, anything?
No.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion for Resolution 2023-48, resolution declaring certain public infrastructure improvements to be public purpose and establishing tax incremental equivalent fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Last resolution, Ms. Ayers. Same thing. I'll go let you take over.
Yes. Resolution 2023-49 extends Resolution 06-33. This is regards to the tax increment financing program on the TQL property. We heard from Caleb Bell at our work session in April that there was some legislative changes that would allow us to extend that TIF for an additional 30 years. This is worth a significant value to the township. So this would be the legislation that extends that previous TQL property TIF.
Great. Any questions from Ms. Ayers? Gentlemen, I entertain a motion for Resolution 2023-49, resolution authorizing an amendment to Resolution 06-33 to extend the term of the tax increment financing program for the Ivy Point TIF.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Do you have...
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Just... The legislation changes. Great to update and review that and not let this, you know, opportunity slip away because it was really a short time window and the thresholds were met for that TIF district to be able to extend this. So for the community's benefit, it's something that will produce, what, $25 million revenue?
Revenue, yes.
So it's good for the community. And anyway, just going to say, Ms. Ayers, to you and the team for the review of the TIF districts, good work on not letting this slip through and giving us the opportunity to take an action on it.
That's good.
Mr. Becker, anything?
Nope.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, that is it. Comments from the board? Mr. Beck, would you like to go first?
Sure. Just want to talk about the East Gate Mall a little bit. I was at the meeting last night, and then I was in there also this morning for a... It's more of a... I guess what they're doing during the day is kind of the open house, if you will, type of thing, no formal presentation. Last night was a formal presentation. They're going to do another formal presentation Thursday, I think in this room, isn't it, Ms. Ayers? Yes. So I look forward to that, and that's going to be kind of a summary of what was learned. So I think it was about 40 people last night. This is at Crossroads Church. A lot of people were just engaged and coming up with ideas. So that was all very encouraging. And, you know, I guess I'm still skeptical that, you know, with the number of owners that have veto power, that, you know, that something's going to come together on this. But it is encouraging to see the public being engaged in the effort.
Well said, Mr. Becker.
Mr. Logan?
Yeah, I'll just add on that with the listening sessions, Mr. Becker. I'm happy to hear you share encouraging. See several committee members here that were in attendance last night, and I recognize that they definitely got value out of that. But I think it's wonderful to be able to engage with the community and hear and listen from the community. And that's, I think, really exactly what that is all for. And I just want to put it, I guess, on your thought processor radar there as far as... I understand the hurdles that can exist with the ownership groups. But what's great is when we're going to be able to look back and have strategic visioning or visuals, per se, of what the community has not really only asked for, but demanded, gives us much more leverage, at least from a communication point, towards owners and that we are lockstep with our community as to what the community expects and wants out of that land value there. And I think it presents our opportunity to where, you know, we can choose a type of course of actions that we take in the future, who we choose to work with or who we don't choose to work with, or who we need to make sure that we're keeping, you know, close attention to detail on as far as the upkeep of the property and property maintenance and issues there. I think it was just, what, last December where the roof fell in and the rain fell in, you know, on Christmas Eve, closed down one of the stores because it was raining through their roof. So, you know, we don't want properties like that in the community. So anyway, I think it's a strong point to be able to leverage the community feedback and be able to deliver for the community. So with that, other kind of quick highlights, gentlemen, you had the Elmington Group at Glen East Campus had a burger cookout in celebration for their, you know, getting the building up on last Friday. Also attending the Union Ribbon Cutting. That's a beautiful facility. I'd encourage you to go out there and take a tour. Their studios, they're one bedrooms and two bedrooms, 190 units, and they've got all the studios leased out. And they said that it's in comparison to the Jeff, which is their other property in another city. They're like, the leasing demand is extremely high for this location.
What's the rate?
They're doing very well. From the studio itself, that's the lowest end. That's like just under 1,000, and it goes up to 1,900 for the units.
Wow.
They're very nice. So, again, 190 units there. You know, and again, recognize that type of investment. You have Wawa down the street. So these things help breed more and more activity. Not coming in front of us, but the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, it's been vacant. The grocery outlet is what's moving in there. So it helps promote that walkability in that corridor, which I'm excited about to see that, you know, especially as, we'll say, October 27th also on the calendar for Cincinnati Children's Hospital groundbreaking. And then we've got, what, another ribbon cutting for Redwood Apartments over on Teal Town. So, yeah, just again, and I'm sure Chairman will hit it too, but encourage people to drop in at Crossroads East Side tomorrow, 10 to 3, for that, to provide any feedback. And then also be here Thursday night, 5:30 to 7 PM for the preliminary review of what the master planners have heard from the community and the residents. And with that, I'll give it to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Logan. First, so I come to the Civic Center somewhat often throughout the week, during the day.
the day, and, uh, Chief, I see your officers, um, many, many times out there hitting pavement hard on working on the Honor Guard, Honor Flight, and, uh, it's volunteer time and I appreciate them. We have, our competition is next year in D. C., correct?
Correct.
I plan on going. We're gonna have a good time. We're gonna celebrate, but also it's a, you know, it's a good somber moment and, uh, but they're, they're really working hard. So just please pass it along. I appreciate it. I see their hard work. So, I was a part of Honor Guard in the Air Force and I know the hard work that they do. So, um, uh, you know, personal comments, uh, we've got the whole awful mess in Israel right now. Uh, prayers for that, uh, and those folks. Pray for Israel. And then, uh, lastly is, uh, we won't be meeting until after the election. Election Day is November seventh. We got issue one, issue two, we got the trustee race and as well as school board. So make sure to get out and vote. You hit on East Gate Mall in our discussions with that. Redwood Grand Opening is this Friday. I'll be there. However, the children's one, I will not be there. Um, that is later on this month. Uh, what?
October twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, and I'll, I'll be out of town. I'll be in Texas that day, so, um, but so hopefully to represent us very well.
Yep.
That's all I got, gentlemen. I'm actually gonna skip executive session and do upcoming events, Ms. Harris, just because, uh, is that all right?
Sure.
All right, so, uh, since most folks leave after the excuse for executive session. So upcoming events, uh, we've got Fall Junk Days will take place October nineteenth through the twenty-first at the Service Department, Thursday and Friday, seven A. M. to five P. M. Saturday is eight to three P. M. Uh, at four three one two Glen Esti Withamsville Road. It's basically right behind the police station. And, uh, Mr. Taylor, thank you for your folks and the time they put into that. Now they're, they're putting in extra time, so much appreciated. Please pass it along. We appreciate them. Doesn't go unnoticed. Halloween night in the township is October thirty-first from six to eight P. M., you know, ish. Get some candy, kids. And then, uh, the Board of Trustees' next meeting, uh, next working session will be October twenty-fourth at six P. M. right here. And the next business meeting will be November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six P. M. right here as well. Gentlemen, that is it. Uh, let me go ahead and read this off. It's a little long. I'm gonna entertain a motion for executive session, for the Board to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one two one point two two G. as in golf, eight, to consider the confidential information related to specific business strategy or personnel, financial, personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, provided that both of the following apply, the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance provided by appropriate chapter of the Ohio Revised Code. Also, a unanimous quorum of the public body determines by a roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interest of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're into executive session at eight twenty-nine P. M.
All right, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to exit executive session with no action taken.
So moved.
Need a second, Mike?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell will call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 9:59 PM. No action taken.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell will call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 10 PM.